I will call the meeting to order. It's 6:01 and I'll just start with a roll call. I will begin with Jackie Bados. Hi Jackie, I see you. Chris Peterson, hi Chris.
How's it?
Wendy Maxdudis.
Here.
Where's I know Simsberry?
Oh, it's behind me.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Can't always get the angle perfect.
No worries. Mike Hayne, I see you.
Nice to be here.
Maria Capriola, town manager.
Hello, good evening.
Hi Maria. Kristin Formanek, Director of Community Social Services.
Yes, hello, good evening.
Hi, good evening. And Chief Falter, good evening.
Good evening.
Is there anyone who's on the phone that I'm missing? Okay. Sean Askam shares his regrets that he can't be here tonight. Something came up with his family and he wishes he could be here. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we begin as we usually do with public audience. Anyone who wants to share a message with the board and have it read aloud at our meetings can send an email to our town clerk Erica Butler at ebutler@simsberry-ct.gov. We have one letter to read tonight and it's from Joan Coe. As we're all experiencing protests, violence, social and financial inequality and a COVID-19 pandemic, the residents of Simsberry have not focused on the issues facing the town. Town manager Maria Capriola has terminated the employment of Robin Newton, an exemplary employee from the planning department. A municipal prohibited practice is claimed against the town manager that is still pending. The town is silent. Chief Falter terminated the employment of Sergeant Tromboli for untruthfulness, while Chief Falter never admitted to saying he would hope that two officers would leave, although several officers heard the comments. Chief Falter is convinced that somewhere a tape of his conversation will surface. Sergeant Tromboli's arbitration hearing will soon be finalized and Sergeant Tromboli will get his job back. The town is silent. Corey Thomas, Simsberry's first black police officer, came from the New Britain Police Department with a glowing record and lasted only a few weeks before he abruptly resigned from the Simsberry Police Department and returned to New Britain. The town is silent. Police Commissioner Jim Fleming resigned from the commission, stating he believes in the rule of law after the town attorney wrote an opinion on the duties of the town manager and the police commission. Town manager Maria Capriola has stated that this opinion is not public information. The town is silent. Gertrude De Ducey's employment was terminated with the library for tardiness while she was on medical leave. Gertrude De Ducey filed a complaint with a commission on human rights and opportunities. Gertrude De Ducey is black. They are investigating her termination. The town is silent. Karen Schreger, an employee with the recreation department, was terminated. There was a financial settlement with the town. The town is silent. According to the charter, the Board of Selectmen is the governing body overseeing the town manager. The Board of Selectmen is silent. All these employees of the town have lost their livelihood, health insurance and benefits. Families are suffering financial loss for no other reason than the town manager and the chief of police have abused their power. The town is silent. Section 502 of the town charter describes the duties of the town manager, appointments and removal of officers, and employees of the police department shall be governed by the provisions of section 615 and 707 of this charter. Section 615 refers to the open space committee, not the police department, which appears to be an error. Section 614 refers to the police department, which is the proper designation, but not referenced under the town manager's duties. Section 707 references the police department, which is correct. Referencing section 615, open space committee in the charter appears to be a significant error. Changes are to be made as the Board of Selectmen require a charter revision commission directed by the state. Will this require another town attorney opinion with another exemption? Town Attorney Bob DiCrescenzo has provided many opinions over the years that are questionable. Town Attorney DiCrescenzo stated at one time that placing political signs affixed on trees is illegal because in his opinion trees do not have First Amendment rights and should be removed. During the Mary Glassman administration, town attorney Bob DiCrescenzo gave a financial donation to her campaign while employed as town attorney for Simsberry. When questioned that this donation was illegal, I was told that Mary Glassman was his friend and since nobody was complaining, it was fine. Is this unethical behavior? Many of the opinions from town attorney DiCrescenzo were questionable. Town manager Maria Capriola is shielding the opinion from the public on the duties of the town manager and the police commission. Eventually, I will file a complaint with the Freedom of Information Commission to rule on whether the opinion is exempt. I asked to review the email Commissioner Mike Long wrote regarding his concerns with the governor's emergency declaration and the process used to apply the declaration for enforcement. This was discussed at the police commission meeting on April 22nd, 2020. I have not received the email. The month of May was designated Mental Health Awareness Month. Under the restrictions of the COVID-19 restrictions of social distancing... Sorry, I lost my place. Under the restrictions of the COVID-19 restrictions of social distancing, restrictions on gathering masks, homeschooling children, some of which have underlying health issues, working from home, many of the families are stressed beyond comprehension. The police department has had increases in calls on welfare checks, family violence, increased consumption of alcohol, and calls for a mobile crisis center with children out of control. The crisis in mental health will continue for many years with most people unequipped to handle these issues within the family unit. Many of the crack buildings that have not been fully utilized should be repurposed and used for mental health services. All of my comments will be posted on Simsberry Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and on Facebook. That was public audience. Again, to participate in public audience during this time of separation, you can send an email to our town clerk Erica Butler at ebutler@simsberry-ct.gov. We're going to move right into my town manager's report, first selectman's report. I didn't mean to promote myself. And I feel like I'm talking a lot, but I look forward to hearing from others soon. First of all, I want to acknowledge the historic week that we've been through as a country where unprecedented numbers of people came out to protest racial injustice and show support for our African-American friends and neighbors. These events, of course, occurred with the COVID-19 pandemic as a backdrop, an event that has had an outsized impact on minority communities. I have a deep appreciation for everyone who's reached out to me via phone and email to share their reflections on our town and the hopes that we continue to move forward in support of diversity and inclusion. I expect progress will be measured by our actions, not our words. I recommit my support to the Equity Council in our schools and the Spirit Council in our town and the work that they are doing to improve the curriculum and deepen the overall. I am supportive of taking steps as an employer to diversify our educators and staff. We have an opportunity to reexamine our policies and how we serve the public with an eye on diversity and equity. I anticipate that this summer, the Board of Selectmen will consider a proposal to provide body cameras to our police officers. This is a meaningful step that we can take to improve the transparency of interactions between our police and the public. I'm also committed to diversifying the makeup of our police commission, a board comprised of citizens of our town that plays a governance role in our police department. I have the highest appreciation for the members who currently serve on this commission, but in 2020, it's vital that our police commission reflect our community and I'm committed to doing my part to make that happen. Like everything we do, I believe that we need to proceed thoughtfully, but also decisively because we do have a moment of unprecedented engagement around this very important issue. I look forward to working collaboratively with you, the Board of Selectmen, Boards of Education and Finance, and of course with you, our community. On reopening plans, our town manager Maria Capriola will share more details in her report, but I did want to point people to our Public Safety Subcommittee, which has been meeting every other Thursday morning at 8:00 a.m. They've been sharing updates and coordinating resources. Their next meeting is scheduled for June 18th and it will be streamed live and archived at simsberrytv.org. These meetings contain the latest information about our town's reopening and they are a great source of information. Our town manager Maria Capriola's three-year contract is expiring at the end of January 2021. Ms. Capriola is Simsberry's first town manager since we transitioned to our new form of government. And this Thursday, the Personnel Subcommittee will be making a recommendation to the full Board of Selectmen about how to proceed with her contract. And we would be appreciative of any input from the public. You can send me an email at ewellman@simsberry-ct.gov. Other members of the Personnel Subcommittee are Sean Askam and Wendy Maxdudis and you can reach out to any of us for Thursday if you'd like any thoughts that you have to share to be considered in that decision. At our last meeting on May 27th, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to make Simsberry a Hidden Heroes City. The Hidden Heroes Initiative is a partnership with the Elizabeth Dole Foundation, Simsberry Social Services and our local veterans organizations with a focus on assisting the caregivers of veterans in our community. One of the primary goals of Hidden Heroes of the campaign is to develop resources at the local level. You can learn more about Hidden Heroes by reaching out to Social Services. You can also view a presentation from our May 27th meeting that's in the minutes from that meeting and I link to it directly in the report that'll be emailed out. Lastly, on my list is the message from the Simsberry Grange. The Grange was awarded a matching grant to fund apprentices for local farmers. They're currently accepting applications for anyone 16 and older. You can earn a stipend for learning from and working with a local farmer. So please send an email with the subject apprentice to info@simsberggrange.org by Friday, June 12th. More information is available at simsberggrange.org under latest news. Maria, the town manager's report.
Great, thank you Eric. Good evening, everyone. So I'll start off with our coronavirus update. Our town buildings do remain closed to the public at this time. We do anticipate that they'll remain closed until at least July 5th. Our staff does continue to work in our closed facilities on a limited basis and we're still encouraging folks to conduct business by phone, email, virtually, or through the mail. Our transfer station is now open with full services, but modified practices are in place. In a coordinated effort with the Board of Education, we have now reopened our tennis courts. And again, that is also with modified practices. At this point in time during Phase 1, we are encouraging recreational play amongst members of the same household on the tennis courts. Our town parks, our open space parcels and our trails do remain open for walking, hiking and cycling. We ask that people utilizing these spaces continue to use social distancing practices from other patrons. Great news to report. The library has implemented, fully implemented its curbside pickup program. So patrons can now reserve materials online and set up a pickup time to get those materials at the library. The full rollout occurred on June 1st. The demand has just been tremendous and really want to commend the library staff for pulling that together. Our recreation staff is hard at work, working on programs this summer. The pool season is scheduled to open on June 20th. This will reflect guidelines from the state and our public health officials. We are also planning a summer camp season that will open on June 22nd. That particular program will be at about 2/3 capacity this year. We're also evaluating the ability to reopen our youth sports and related facilities during Phase 2, so more to come on that in the coming weeks. We are currently planning for a soft reopening of other municipal services programs and buildings for the summer. This does involve gradually returning our administrative staff on rotating schedules, aligning with Phase 2 of the state's reopening plans. Tentatively, around June 22nd, our residents will be able to make appointments with staff to conduct business that can't be done by mail, email, or virtually. When our patrons are in the building, we will require that face masks be worn. And some sad news, but based on information we are receiving from our public health officials, it is unlikely that we'll be able to reopen the senior center prior to Labor Day. Unfortunately, it could be extended as late as the calendar year. So we'll continue to monitor that situation and report back on that frequently. And a reminder for members of our public, we have now temporarily suspended cash payments. That will be through at least September 14th. We hope that that won't cause too much of an inconvenience as folks can still pay their taxes and other fees by check. They can send that to us in the mail. They also can leave that in Dropbox at Town Hall. Or people can make payments electronically with their credit card or debit card payment. A quick update on our property tax deferral program. We have now received 42 approved applications for that program. That's resulting in approximately $234,000 in deferred revenue for the first installment that's ordinarily due in July. We are still accepting applications for that program and people can find that application on the tax collector's website. Another reminder that our meetings do continue to remain closed to the public until further notice and that's to remain in compliance with the governor's executive orders on that matter. We are still holding our meetings over Zoom and broadcasting them through SCTV, either on TV or people can watch them online at simsberrytv.org. A recent executive order required municipal chief executive officers to designate an individual or individuals to enforce the sector rules associated with reopening. Most of the sector rules will be enforced by the municipality. A handful of sectors, the salon, tattoo parlor spot, were given to the health district. So at this time, our police department and our planning department, which includes our building staff, have been empowered to enforce those rules. To date, we have not received a lot of complaints and when we do receive a complaint, staff will investigate that. And generally, our emphasis is on compliance and most folks have been very understanding and willing to work with us on compliance. We continue to receive inquiries from our residents on how they can help the fellow community members in need. So a reminder that our Social Services Department is taking non-perishable food items, toiletries, laundry detergent, dish soap, baby items such as wipes, diapers, baby food, and kid-friendly snacks remain some of our most needed items. We're also accepting gift cards to grocery stores, gas stations, laundromats, as well as financial donations to support our food programs. So again, if you would like to contribute, please contact our Social Services Department. Social Services also continues to collect hand-sewn or sewing machine-done cloth-based coverings and we've received over 1,600 to date, which is just really incredible. Folks have been so generous. We've been able to redistribute over 1,000 of those to members in our community. If you are a Simsberry resident or a member of our business community and you need face masks, please don't hesitate to reach out to Social Services. Again, they've been generously donated to us so we're able to distribute those to members of our community for free. Some really good news to report. The Farmington Valley Health District, town staff and our prior district have been working with an urgent care provider. We do anticipate being able to provide local COVID testing for the community, most likely to be held on June 24th and June 25th. As we have more information in terms of location and how folks can pre-register for that testing, we'll make sure to widely publicize that information for the public. And a quick reminder, for the most up-to-date information on which businesses are open, please go to shopsimsberry.com. I want to thank the Main Street Partnership for their work in keeping that website updated. Moving on to department news and notes, a quick reminder that June is the time of EI year to renew your dog license. So we have information in the manager's report on how folks can do that electronically this year. That was a really nice planned improvement of the clerk's office that just happened to kind of coincidentally, you know, really help out during the pandemic that folks can now do that transaction entirely electronically. An update from police. You may recall that we were engaged in arbitration with our police union over their pension contract. We did receive notice from the State Board of Mediation and Arbitration that we did receive a favorable outcome on the town's behalf in that case. The panel awarded all issues to the town with the exception of one very minor issue. The pension changes proposed by the town and that were awarded to us will save approximately $1 million over a 15-year period. And then the police union did have a proposal that was on the table that would have cost the town approximately $940,000 over that same 15-year period. That particular proposal was rejected by the arbitration panel. So overall, a good outcome for the town in that case. A reminder that there is going to be some construction along Route 167, Route 4 in Farmington into Route 44, just touching the corner of Simsberry. However, we do expect increased truck traffic in Simsberry as a result of that project. We do expect that project will be complete around June 25th, but just want to remind people that they may see increased truck traffic as a result of that. And from our Public Works Department, we have a household hazardous waste collection scheduled for this Saturday, June 13th, at the Simsberry Public Works Facility from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. For those folks who don't know, that's located on Town Forest Road. You can drop off items such as fluorescent and CFL bulbs, items containing mercury, household chemicals, used motor oil, used paint. We'll also be accepting electronics as well as any paper shredding that you might need. So you'll recall, we typically do a paper shredding event in the spring that was canceled due to the pandemic, but we can take up to two boxes of items that you need to be shredded. And this event is free and open to all of our residents. And lastly, from our Social Services Department, the Farmington Valley Visiting Nurse Association will begin performing blood pressure and blood sugar screenings for us each Wednesday from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That will occur in the back parking lot of Ena Memorial Hall. Appointments are not required. And that for those who might need an in-home check, please reach out to the Simsberry Senior Center at 860-583-273. Some of you may recall that the VNA normally does provide these types of screenings for us at the senior center. It's an amazing service to our residents. And again, due to the pandemic, those services were suspended, but working with Social Services, the VNA has been able to come up with a way to begin providing the service again to folks. So again, just want to make people aware of that and again, encourage you, if you're a senior and you need these checks and you're at home, to please reach out to the senior center so we can help get that set up for you. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you Maria.
Thank you.
And thank you all staff. It's so clear how much work is going on right now in town. Item A under Selectment Action is a statement in memory of George Floyd and in support of our African-American community. I prepared a statement that I'd like to get the board's feedback on and it's an opportunity for us to speak with a collective voice to our community. So I'll ask Tom to pull that up. And as we're pulling that up, I also wanted to open up the conversation to the full board. During my first selectman's report, I had the opportunity to share some of my reflections over the past week, week and a half. I just wanted to see if there were other thoughts or reflections that others wanted to share or the demonstrations that had been held around town or other conversations that you've had.
Are we gonna, are you gonna read the letter or?
I will, I will. And I just wanted to just...
Oh, you wanted, well, I would just say, I attended a small demonstration on Tuesday and then the larger demonstration on Friday. I was able to go because I didn't work on Friday. So I feel bad for people that weren't able to be there. But there was a crowd, I believe, estimated between 4, 5, 600 people over the day. And it was, everyone was very respectful of each other and it was very heartfelt and emotional. And I did want to weigh in on the fact that our police department was fully present there and helping the attendees with crossing the street, stopping traffic, really kept things running smoothly when there was an impromptu speaker in the middle of the road. There was no issue with hot metal being shut down. So I do want to give kudos to our police department during that time because I'm sure it's hard for them with something like this going on. And just that our community came out in full force and showed their true colors.
Thanks Wendy.
Yep.
Eric, this is Mike. I am personally really bothered by the events and I think it makes us really appreciate about the quality police that we have in town and that they really are part of the community. And that was very evident to me. And I support your letter and think it's very appropriate. Thank you.
Thanks Mike.
Hey folks. Chris, good evening. I don't think there's much to add to your letter, Eric. Thank you so much for drafting it on behalf of the board. One unique thing I'd like to share with the chief, which you know how I feel about you chief in the department and how wonderful a job you guys do. It's tough to really have some perspective when most of the events that people are protesting against are nothing that you really have optics into for yourself. It's not a position I've ever been in. So it's hard to comment and you just sort of watch and learn. But something really interesting for our family came out of this. We were spending time with my mom who, you know, as many of you folks know, my mom is 85, almost 86, and she grew up in Charlotte, North Carolina, in a segregated area of town. It was, and she doesn't really talk much about that part of her life, but we were spending time with her and my kids were asking her, and she was asking my kids about all they had seen. And if you folks know, I've got a couple of 11-year-olds and a 13-year-old. And it's really incredible how much they are seeing just in life in general now because of the access to electronic media and such. And you really pushed me forward to start, my wife pushed me forward to start having conversations with them about what they saw. And certainly Kristin, you can probably speak to this. What came out of their mouths completely shocked me in the sense of their level of awareness about what was occurring. And it was something that I should have taken a closer look at and taken more responsibility for to start the conversation earlier because they were scared. One of them was really, really scared and was in tears when we were talking about it as a family. And my mom was in tears sharing her experiences growing up in the South. And it was a really interesting dynamic that unfolded in a very uncomfortable way, but in a very natural way. And I was surprised and I was proud of us for having that conversation. And I would encourage, I don't need to be giving advice to parents. I don't need to be giving advice to my fellow community members, but if I could share one thing, it's just to, maybe sooner rather than later, to talk to your children about what they're seeing and what they're hearing, what they're feeling on this topic because it really was surprising to me and I'm sort of disappointed in myself again for not having that conversation earlier. And chief, one of the things that one of my boys said, who has a real affinity for one of your officers, they see them around Central often and such, was, he said, no dad, I don't think that could happen in Simsberry. And I said, I said, don't worry son, I'm positive it couldn't happen in Simsberry. But I'm also aware that we are a self-reflective community and I know you as a leader are self-reflective and you can never let your guard down and that you have the proper mindset in place and the proper learnings and tools in place to assure that your officers always lead by example. And I appreciate what you guys do for our community and I really appreciate the fellow board members that I serve with because I know each of them, we've spoken independently and it feels good that we all, I believe, are of the same mindset. So thank you guys for letting me give a little bit tonight.
Thanks for sharing that, Chris.
Eric?
Yeah, Jackie.
I want to also echo what everybody else on the board has said about their thoughts about their thoughts and the praise for our police department specifically at this time. Not only for the traffic control, but I'm very impressed by our town and our police having conversations. If you want to say joining the protests, I think that is, it shows kind of what Chris Peterson was just saying. It shows the community that we are or that we do hope to be. And I think, I really appreciate your letter, Eric. I think that's very thoughtful. And I think that this has all brought up the conversations that we need to have in Simsbury. And I think we're going to speak about it maybe a little bit more when we get to the item about the Simsbury Spirit Council. But those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Jackie. Thanks, everyone who shared. What I'd like to do is read the letter and I'll see if there's a motion to support it. And if anyone has any proposed changes, we can talk about it then. As leaders of the town of Simsbury, we write to share in the heartache that is felt by our community and our country following the death of George Floyd at the hands of the police. We denounce the horrific event and extend our support to our Black African-American friends and neighbors. We denounce racism in all of its forms, and we stand with those in our nation who are calling for systemic change. The death of George Floyd occurred against the backdrop of the COVID-19 pandemic, a global crisis that none of us have experienced in our lifetimes. The pandemic exposed deep-seated inequities, bringing them to greater focus as the Centers for Disease Control reports higher illness and death among minority communities. In Simsbury, there is no place for hate toward any person or group of people. We're committed to the ideals of diversity and inclusion. We thank the members of our community who've spoken up, reached out, and shared ideas for making Simsbury a more equitable place to live and work. Your feedback is evidence that we need to continue to support the work of our town's Spirit Council and our school's Equity Council. That's only a start. As the leaders of this community, we must ensure our words align with our actions. As we commit to diversity and inclusion, we must look introspectively at our own organization, the policies and practices that guide our work and how we serve the public. We must reflect on the practices, our practices as an employer. The Board of Selectmen supports our police chief and his department's continuous drive to serve everyone equitably and with distinction. We strive to remain thoughtful in this work. We commit to deepening the dialogue between your local government, our police, and the Black slash African-American community. As a country, we know that we can do better to confront systemic racism. In Simsbury, it is our intent to be leaders in this space. This work is integral to ensuring the collective well-being of our entire community. Is there a motion to support this letter?
So moved.
I'll second it. Wendy, second it.
Wendy seconded. Thank you. There, any further conversation?
I have a conversation, I don't know where, if it should go after you make the motion?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we do that afterwards? Is there any other conversation or proposed changes to this letter?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Again, thank you all for your support. And we'll make sure that this is, this will go out as part of my first selectman's report. And then we'll put it out as a separate item right on the town's Facebook page. Wendy?
Yes. So I wanted to bring up to see if there was some action that we could take and if it's appropriate to take it tonight or if it's something we need to look at over the next couple of weeks. But there's an initiative out there, a nonpartisan initiative, that's asking all leaders, and it's labeled as the mayor's pledge. But I think you could label it as the Board of Selectmen pledge. It's really going out to mayors, leaders of towns, I think states and councilmen to take a pledge where we review, you know, initiate a review of our use of force policy. Now, I'm sure the chief is proactive and this information is all available for us, which I would love to see. I, just as a Board of Selectmen member, to know what our use of force policy is. And I know that we have a police commission in place that is supposed to be the oversight civilian body of our town that works with Nick and, you know, makes sure our policies are in line with the town values and adhere to the state requirements. Because I know that we submit all of these policies to the state and there are stats that we submit. And I believe we have a high accreditation in the state. So I'm asking if we can take this pledge, and I don't know if it has to be done formally, but to review what our use of force policies are. And in addition to that, I would be interested to know what our training policies are. But the steps are to just initiate that review. And then there's further steps where you engage the community and stakeholders to review these policies, then report out the findings. And then ultimately, it results in any reform that needs to be proposed. So I'm just putting this to the board and to the chief on thoughts on how to do this because it is out there in the sphere. And, you know, I believe Luke Bronin, I don't know other local leaders. I know Luke Bronin has taken that challenge. But it's just something that has been on my mind since it came out last week.
Thanks, Wendy. Let me open it up for conversation.
Eric, this is Mike. I think before we go taking any pledges or anything like that, I think we give our police commission an opportunity and the chief to do exactly what they've done for the last week plus as part of the community and been involved in the community. And I want to hear their feedback because they're the feet on the street and literally. And I want them to be giving their expertise to us. And while we are the Board of Selectmen, we do have a police commission, we have a chief, and I want to let them do their job. And I think our job as selectmen is to make sure that we tee up all the different pieces of the town, be it the Spirit Council or anything else, to make sure that everything fits together and nothing like this ever happens in Simsbury.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, my godders. So my recommendation is, you know, Wendy, my opinion is that a review of our use of force policy may be exactly the right thing to do. But I think that, I know that the, you know, the police commission is meeting tonight, actually, right when we're meeting.
Okay.
One of the things that they're discussing is what may be next steps that they would propose. And I have all the faith that our police department in collaboration with the police commission, which is a citizen oversight board in consultation with our town manager, will give us their feedback on what they think are the highest priorities related to our police departments and ensuring that all people are treated fairly and equitably. And my concern with going down a particular route right now is it may not be the highest priority. And I'd like to just hear from these folks who know better than I do, for sure.
Yeah, Eric, there's a blend of, I respect the spirit of the intent of Wendy's request. And there can be no fault, a question found in that, whichever. But I skew to the, to listening to Mike's comments and Eric's comments. And I'm sort of in that camp in the sense that it's not kick, don't kick the can to somebody else's responsibility. I'm not trying to displace them. But we have an organization, we have a group who is far more in tune with taking up, I think, the question that you're asking and we are as a group. And we should hold them accountable for their response to us hearing these types of sentiments tonight, knowing this is the direction that we're going in. And if we don't see them going in that same direction as far as looking into these types of the policies and procedures and the direction that learnings are moving us in as a community, society, as law enforcement, along with Chief Walter, then I think we could, then I think we could sort of put some structure around what our thoughts are formally in that sense. But I would prefer that we see what, I'm quite positive, they feel the not, pressure is a tough word to use, but I'm sure, they certainly want to make sure we're right as well. Because that is their, it falls in their responsibilities of oversight.
And just to add, I'm sure, I know the chief, we talked at the event, I just didn't call it an event, the demonstration, that the policy is available. So as a Board of Selectmen, we can ask to review those policies ourselves, which would be something I would be interested in knowing where that is and being able to see it. Because I stand with our police department and would like to see what we do in these situations. So I guess as an informal ask, formal ask, that's something that, you know, I can follow up, Nick, with you and Maria and the board.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other conversation?
I have one more. Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, Wendy, please, go ahead, go ahead.
It's just one more thing, and it's just out, it's also out in the sphere, is the, the concept that we keep hearing about defunding the police. And I just wanted to address that because if people are questioning that or saying that, I heard that chant on Friday, and I didn't really agree with it in our situation because we are, we're the elected body of the town. We look out for the best interests of our residents, of people that work here. And we fund the police for the safety and benefit of the people that are here. And so to me, those calls for us and what I know of what we do really is not something that I would adhere to. I think we fund the police for the safety of our town with the benefit of our town. And we provide other services to our town to meet the standards of their needs. So I just wanted to put that out there if that's something people are questioning, to kind of maybe put it to rest, to table that before assuming that's something that has to happen.
Thanks, Wendy. Maria, were you gonna add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think that the statement you all approved tonight was just so beautifully stated. And it makes me really proud to be working for you all and working for this community. And I really look forward to working with you and the chief and the police commission on policy review and any projects that may grow out of, you know, this endeavor that we'll be embarking on. So again, just thank you for the statement tonight. I know that the chief and I already do have a potential project we will be bringing to you either later this month or early in July. You'll recall that we had presented the body camera project to you as part of the capital and non-recurring fund budget. That was a year-two project, but we would really like to expedite that project to make it a year-one project. So we've been working on a financial analysis with our finance director to look at options and how we can make that project happen sooner. So we're really excited about that. And again, we'll be trying to bring that to you either at your next meeting or the first meeting in July.
Great. Thank you, Maria. And Wendy, I just want to say, I appreciate you bringing up the mayor's pledge. And I don't want anyone watching tonight to think that I am not embracing the mayor's pledge and not signing on tonight. I just want to give it a little more time and make sure that it's the highest priority right now. And I trust the police commission and the chief to provide that recommendation. Chief, you're on mute if you're saying something.
No, I'm sorry, I was dealing with something else.
Oh, no worries, no worries. I'm sorry. Okay. All right, I'll move on then to an item that will probably require less conversation, tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective June 8, 2020, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $903.78 and authorize Town Manager Maria Cabrio to execute the tax refund?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Jackie moved, Wendy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Item C, next on our agenda is the proposed appointment of Michael Berry, Simsbury's Emergency Management Director. This comes as Kevin Kowalski, our current Emergency Management Director, will be taking a much deserved retirement. Michael grew up in Simsbury, graduated from Simsbury High School, and he joined the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Company when he was 15 and has had a career as a first responder and EMS ever since. Maria, I just wanted to, I know you've had the opportunity to work with him. I want to see if you wanted to add anything.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks so much, Eric. So I've had the pleasure of working with Mike in the capacity of Assistant Emergency Management Director. And he is just so professional, knowledgeable. He's integrated incredibly well with our leadership team. And he's just demonstrated great leadership and knowledge during the pandemic. So I'm just truly excited to bring this recommendation to you. He has been a tremendous asset to the organization, to this community. And I know he'll continue to be a new, a great asset as he grows in his new role as the EMD.
Thanks, Maria. Is there any questions anyone had or anything anyone wanted to add?
Eric, I've also met Mike, and I think he would fill this role just perfectly. I have to second what Maria says.
Great. Is there a motion effective June 8, 2020, to appoint Michael Berry as the Emergency Management Director, Civil Preparedness Director for the town of Simsbury, effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2022? His designation shall remain in effect until reappointment occurs, rescinded, or Mr. Berry's separation from service, whichever comes first.
So moved.
Second.
Chris moved, Jackie seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion passes. Congratulations, Michael. Item D is a proposed Greater Hartford Transit Dial-A-Ride Assistance Grant. So this is an opportunity for the town to apply for a grant that would fund 80% of the cost to replace our dial-a-ride vehicle. That amounts to just over $13,000, and it was approved as part of our capital budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I just wanted to see if there was anything Kristin or Maria wanted to add on this item before we move forward. Are there any questions for Kristin or Maria? Jackie?
Oh, not a question, just a comment, the liaison to the Housing Authority. And this would be wonderful if we could apply for this grant. And it is, like you said, more of a nominal amount for us to match. So thank you.
You're welcome. We're really excited to apply for this grant. And since I've been on board with the town of Simsbury, it's been one of my goals to get us back on a regular replacement vehicle schedule so that we can anticipate these costs through the coming years. As you approve through the budget process, our hope is to replace our oldest vehicle first. And that first step is with this grant. These grants do take over a year to fully matriculate, if you will. So this grant, we will send in the application this week. Awards are funded in the following April. So if we are to receive an award, it would be next April. And then we hopefully would have a new bus on the road maybe by the end of the year of '21. And then at the same time, next year, we will apply for the grant again to replace our second oldest bus. And then that will put us hopefully back on a good schedule. And you can anticipate these expenditures every five years for these buses.
Great. Thanks, Kristin.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion effective June 8, 2020, to approve the submission of the Connecticut Department of Transportation 50 through 10 capital application grant? And in the event that the grant is awarded, to authorize Town Manager Maria Cabrio to execute all of the grant documents?
So moved.
So I'll second it. You could have.
Was that Jackie that moved?
Yeah, Jackie, then Wendy.
Okay, and Wendy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eric, can I just say thank you to Maria and town staff? I know grant writing is a very involved process, so thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, item E, this one gives me just a lot of pleasure to read.
Take care, Kristin.
Bye.
Bye, Kristin.
Thank you.
We received a generous donation from the Archdiocese of Hartford for $3,500 to support our food programs. And we know that our food programs have been under so much demand this spring. So as I, as we accept this donation, I think that it's important to to continue to emphasize the need and the fact that our Social Services Department is serving more families and doing so effectively. And just as we lost Kristin, Maria, can I put you on the spot just to reiterate what the need is and how people can contribute? I've asked that question a lot.
No, sure, absolutely. So we've just seen tremendous demand for the food programs during the pandemic. Ordinarily, we serve about 80 households monthly for our Cheese Day program. During the pandemic, we've continued to see that number grow to about 115 to 120 participating households. We've also had to increase the frequency from once a month to once every three weeks. And we're doing a combination of gift cards to grocery stores along with non-perishable items and various toiletries and cleaning supplies and things of that nature for our residents. There's also quite a bit of demand for baby-related items. So again, things like wipes, diapers, baby- There's also quite a bit of demand for baby related items. So again, things like wipes, diapers, baby food, larger sized diapers. A lot of times folks often think about the little diapers, but we there has actually been a need for some of the larger sizes. And so those are some really great ways that folks can help out by donating if they're able to.
Great. Thanks, Maria. Is there a motion effective June 8, 2020 to accept the Archdiocese of Hartford Archbishop's annual appeal donation? The amount of $3,500 for the purpose of supporting Sims Berry Community and Social Services Department food programs that assist our residents.
No move.
So Chris, go ahead, Chris.
I saw Mike's lips move first.
That's Mike.
My beard, my beard is getting bigger than Mike's. You can't see mine. That's the challenge now. Let Mike have it.
Thanks for the second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
With our thanks, aye. Item F is a purchase of signpost banners. So last September, we invited the community to participate in the painting of a pride art project at the Performing Arts Center. The Board of Selectmen at the time personally purchased banners to accompany the installation. These banners were designed by a local artist. In your packets tonight is a proposal to purchase additional banners to be used along Iron Horse during times of the season when when there aren't other events going on. This was an idea that originally that originated at a at a staff level and and would, you know, the proposal is that it would cost about $1,200 and it would come from the Ellsworth Trust, which is designated to be used for the beautification of our downtown. Maria, is there anything you wanted to add? This is sort of the genesis of this.
Sure. So, you know, we're at a staff level, we're really excited about the pride banners. I think that those have worked out really nicely. We do have additional signposts that we could put additional banners on if we had them along Iron Horse Boulevard. We could also purchase some additional kits to expand the amount of signposts that are available. And again, we really thought that this would be something, again, that the banners have been very well received. They add beauty to our downtown. They show that we're an inclusive community. So we'd really just like to expand the presence along Iron Horse with those. And we're very fortunate, we do have the Ellsworth Trust, so it would not have a general fund impact and it's a pretty, you know, small dollar amount. And I think it would have a really large, large impact. So just looking for some directional support, technically, I could authorize the expenditure that is within my my authority to do so. But again, since this is something that the board had taken up less ball, Eric and I spoke about it and we thought we'd like to bring it back to you all just to see if there was directional support for producing more banners.
And just Maria, it says you would use it for potentially other, not just the pride banners, but anything else that we wanted to show to exemplify the beautiful nature of our town, right? Like
Yeah. So, you know, you'll see in a lot of communities seasonal banners along decorative lampposts. And we do also have the kits on the decorative lamppost along Hot Meadow as well. And so we've talked about at a staff level and not as much thought has gone into this yet, but just some seasonal banners that perhaps we could purchase that we would change out, you know, autumn, spring, summer, fall, winter. We've also talked about maybe the decorative holiday lighting that you'll often see in communities. We've had a lot of requests for those in the past, so potentially we may look at some seasonal banners down the road.
Great, thanks.
Other questions or input? Okay. Is there a motion effective June 8, 2020 to support the purchase of additional signpost banners and kits to be hung by town staff on Iron Horse Boulevard?
So move.
I'll second.
I heard Mike and Wendy. I'll give it to you. I hope that's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Maria, thanks for bringing this idea to us. One, on a related note, I wanted to to just get feedback from the board on another idea. I was, I think at the time when we moved forward with what was then a rainbow crosswalk, I was naive in realizing what a, an impact this would have on many, many, many members of our community. And when you, when you look at the relatively low cost and the symbolism and getting our community involved in painting it, it puts Sims Berry on a map around the state and I heard, I've heard from people across the country who saw pictures of it, who wanted to know how they could do the same thing. And it made us a leader in that space and it made me really proud. And I wanted to just share another thought with this group, which would be the idea of purchasing a banner that would go across one of our roadways that has a statement specific to what's happening now. Something along the lines of there is no place for hate in Sims Berry. There are poets that could probably figure something better out. But it's just sending a message to everyone in our community inexpensively and clearly that everyone is welcome.
I like that idea.
I do too.
I certainly support that as well. I'm gonna like to take credit for this idea, but my wife gave it to me, so I'll actually hear her credit. But she mentioned something similar to the cross, the crosswalk idea on the other side of the Iron Horse entrance that might be something that we can participate in. The similar statement, the similar involvement by our community members as well. So I would, I would encourage, that might be something we could think and dialogue around and think about too. Sort of a nice bookend to the entryway in there.
Good idea. Thank you, Chris.
I think it's a good idea and I think we, I like the idea about, you know, no room for hate or wherever this goes. Because far more eloquent people than myself will come up with something far better.
The one thing I could do, similar to what I did with the crosswalk, is open it up for ideas on social media. And it's just a way of letting our community know we're thinking about doing this and perhaps at our next meeting, we could look at some of the top choices and move forward reasonably quickly.
That would be great.
It's a good idea.
Hope you do. Great. Thanks for all of your support.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay. On a related topic, item G is a request that we received for a social media account from the Sims Berry Spirit Council. The Spirit Council, you know, I think it's I want to spend just a little bit of time sharing with our residents what the Spirit Council is about. Because I've been, you know, when I looked at some of the comments on social media, I don't think that there's as much awareness about some of the things that are already underway and have been underway for a bit of time. So our Spirit Council came in response to concerns about race relations. And the Board of Education and Community for Care has co-sponsored the Diversity Forum. This was last May, so a little over a year ago. The Department of Justice was chosen as the facilitator and over 100 people came together across the community. And Spirit stands for Sight, Problem Identification and Resolution of Issues Together. And in September of 2019, the Spirit Council was launched to move this work forward. And the mission is to represent the community at large and to really serve as our diversity champions. And the Spirit Council is meeting monthly and we'll be doing a presentation for the Board of Selectmen in September about the work that's going on. Their work was temporarily sidelined because of the COVID pandemic, but they are back up and running and we will be sharing ways for people to get involved. Right in March, before all of this happened, they sponsored a community discussion forum on implicit bias. So they've, they've been active, but they are going to become more active in the, in the months to come and I look forward to that. And now they are looking for a Facebook presence because we all know you're not on Facebook, you don't exist. So I wanted to see if there were any questions from the board on this item.
I'd like to make a comment, not a question.
Please, Jackie.
I've worked with Sherri Cook and she's one of the maybe founders of this organization. I think this is so important. It's so wonderful that we have this. And I agree, Eric, a lot of people I think don't know that we have this Spirit Council. I would be in full favor of them having a social media presence. And I feel confident with Sherri Cook manning it and obviously, or I guess maybe not obviously, hopefully with town staff's oversight. So it looks like Kristen, but obviously Maria. So I think that's very important, but to have a presence so people know that this group exists.
Exactly. Thanks, Jackie. I want to also give a shout out to Nicole Kodak, who is Cheryl's co-chair on this group and they've both been great partners on this. Anyone else want to get in? Okay, is there a motion effective June 8, 2020 to approve the creation of the Sims Berry Spirit Council Facebook account to be used by the committee to publicize their efforts, of which town staff will have oversight?
Make a motion?
I'll second it.
Jackie moved. Wendy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. As we move on to the minutes from our last meeting on May 27, were there any changes anyone would suggest?
I just had one correction or clarification on the discussion about the Board of Ed. That it's just that they were moving with, I wanted to restate it that the Board of Ed is moving forward with the Tecton option to add sixth grade to Henry James Middle School. It just said to expand and to renovate as new Latimer Lane as part of Phase One.
Okay, that's a good
Just a clarification, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes with that change?
What page?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any liaison or subcommittee reports tonight?
Just a real quick comment. I participated in the May 12. I would encourage anybody to go back and watch the May 28 Culture Park and Rec meeting, the minutes from that. Couple of things just kind of highlighted came to mind. One was the outstanding job that I know that the Sims Berry Farms Golf Course Complex Operations Team is doing to provide that service to the town residents. The amount of usage up there is higher than it's ever been, which is really amazing. And the, and the job that the team up there has done to adapt to the, to the, the operational conditions is impressive. Another thing is that during that meeting, there was given a little bit of a preview, a little bit of a preview to how the pool might be open. Like everything else in life, it is a complete work in progress. Don't take that, the notes or the comments from that meeting to be gospel, how things are going to open. But I think it just shows how hard are, are the folks who are charged with the responsibility of operating that center up there are working to meet the potential opening conditions when they do come down. Again, it's probably changed since that meeting, but there's a lot of thought that's gone into it and a lot of work. And so if people are looking for a little bit of information, that May 28 meeting will have that. Most importantly, during that meeting, which I was really floored, the Orlando gave a presentation which was really impactful. And I'd asked him to come make the same presentation to at one of our meetings just because I thought it was really incredible to hear just what they've been doing around town during the pandemic. And a lot of it is the stuff that we often talk about that goes completely unseen of like, who are, who are the people? Who are the elves that come out and do that at night? Oh, my gosh, who's doing all this kind of stuff? It's incredible. And just the, how they've adapted to work around the residents and the needs of our residents now and how we've all had to adjust to living in town. And also some of the interesting projects that they've undertaken, they've been able to undertake because time has been shifted someplace else. They certainly, of all, of anybody, have not taken any time off and have been incredibly busy. So it would just give you folks, if you guys get some time to kill, watch that May 28 meeting. You'll get a bunch of information. I think it gets also insight how hard that staff works and what to do and to kind of to keep our, our community moving forward and keeping it beautiful as well.
Thanks, Chris. Jackie? I saw you take yourself out of mute. That's why I called in. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. All right, where are we? Anything under communications that anyone wanted to raise?
I guess I'll kind of jump in. I don't know if I should recuse myself or not to talk about the Mirror Trash Plant, but that is a very big issue that will affect everybody. Two good articles and I would expect something to come out of that in the next 60 to 90 days.
Okay. Yeah, that's a conversation that had been put on pause this spring. And residents who want to learn more, I think it was, were those CT News Junkie articles, Maria?
Yes.
For the source, okay. And they're at the very end of our packet.
Yeah, one was the Connecticut Mirror and the other was CT News Junkie.
And we did have, we did have lots of conversation on that back in December, January. If anybody wants to go back and watch those meetings, they could hear and learn a lot from us and Tom Roy at the time.
Yeah, Eric, if I could just quickly add, you know, I think it's just so unfortunate that at this point in time, you know, we're not seeing an investment from the state. This is a great example of regionalism that has worked well. And not only that, but it has given us the ability to not, you know, ship our trash to another state to be buried in the ground. So it's just, again, incredibly unfortunate. The Mirror Board has shared with us that if the state is unable to provide some sort of financial investment into the rehabilitation of the facility, that they will most likely have to switch gears and move to a transportation model. So that's just really, again, very unfortunate news. I know the Mirror Board is not, you know, not happy to even having to essentially move in that direction. We'll continue to monitor the situation. And I know that the Mirror Board is working with some of our, our state elected officials on this issue and trying to get some support from the state because they do anticipate that, you know, the other regional facilities in the state won't be too far behind us. And again, this is, again, hoping, hoping for some leadership from the state and that we'll see an investment from them. So we can continue to operate in a manner how we have been.
Good. Thanks, Maria. Okay, finally, I'll see if there's a motion to adjourn to executive session. There's three items. A is a review of open space under the Plan of Conservation and Development for the Purpose of Tax Exemption. Item B is pending litigation regarding the Tobacco Valley Solar Real Estate Tax Appeal. And item C is pending litigation regarding Sea Tech Solar. We'll be joined by Maria Gabriola, Town Manager, Bob DiCrescenzo. Anybody I'm missing, Maria?
Thanks. Mike Litten, our Planning Director, Francine Beland, our Assessor, and Amy Meriwether, our Finance Director.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that? Agreed?
To adjourn?
To adjourn to executive session. So Wendy made it, if that's okay? Okay.
I don't think I did, but I'll take it.
Okay, I'll give it to you. Mike seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.